I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Where is Lucina? Am I up?
Yeah.
Lovely. Please turn off all your cell phones.
Also, about 7:30, I'm gonna leave, but I'm gonna come back and Mike will take over.
Can I bang the gavel?
And you can have that. If you get to use it, I'll be very jealous.
From the administration and staff, we have the Capital Outlay Project and SEQR process. David Martin?
Thank you, David.
Okay, swing around, give me a couple seconds. I want to talk to you tonight and explain this $100,000 budgeted capital outlay project, and I'm emphasizing the word budgeted, because it is money that is tentatively in the upcoming budget that everyone will be voting on. I don't want it to be confused with any other projects that anybody is hearing about in the community. First, I want to start with a little bit of history. Peter, one of the rights, please. Okay, back in the 90s and a little bit before, school districts used to receive a small percentage portion of their state aid in the form of what was called minor maintenance aid. Okay, this aid was designed for school districts to do minor capital projects within the district. All right, and over a period of time with some lobbying, that minor maintenance aid got rolled into what is now called foundation aid. Districts no longer were using that money to do small capital projects. So now, what you're seeing is you're seeing much larger projects, and not so many districts doing these smaller projects. So what happened is state aid looked at that and said, "You know, our buildings are starting to really deteriorate because we're not seeing this upkeep going on. The money isn't in the budget." So they started to encourage districts to put $100,000 into their budget so that these little capital outlay projects could be done to do some of these minor things, similar to what used to happen under the minor maintenance aid. This year, we need to remain committed to that $100,000. We need to get our budget passed, keeping it in there year after year to help prevent breakdowns and creating emergency projects which may or may not get state-funded depending on what kind of a project it is. So in essence, this is our way of doing minor preventive maintenance and getting some state funding to support it. So how does it work? In its simplest form, if you gave me a dollar and said, "I need to do some repairs on my building," and say to you, "Okay, I'll do the repairs," and in a year from now, you're gonna get 75 cents of that back from the state. You get to keep everything I do for you, and hopefully, we'll make another deal next year, and all you have to do is budget a quarter. So we'll have another whole dollar to do another whole dollar's worth of work the following year. So in terms of the $100,000 project, what will happen here is we'll design a project based on $100,000, a single train, one building, with a pretty definite scope of work to it. Next year, you're gonna get a check back from the state, roughly $75,000. So in the 2015 or 2016-17 budget, I'm gonna be talking to Tom, and Tom will be talking to you again and say, "We're gonna try and do another $100,000 project, and all we have to do is put $25,000 into a capital budget line, and we'll get another $100,000 project out of it." And we keep doing this year after year so we can do this maintenance and repair and improvement project. So what should we do? Well, borrowing from our architects, we need to keep our buildings warm, safe and dry. Those are the things that we need to do. In looking over our recent building condition survey, potential future of the building, and not being able to have aid applied to it because we're talking about leasing space, the fact that we have current water infiltration, what makes the most economic sense right now is to consider doing some work as GLP on what's called the building envelope, the outside of the building. It's the ideal candidate to get this work done now. If you take a look at the drawing, you're gonna see some highlighted areas, and I had to look myself on colorblind, and I apologize. There's blue and pink there, and I can somewhat see them, but essentially, the area in the center is areas that were identified in the building condition survey as being unsatisfactory, that really needed attention right away, and the areas that are marked in pink are areas that there's some masonry work that needs to be attended to, so that the water infiltration isn't causing problems with the paint, the plaster, and any interior finishes within the building. Some examples, we have some areas that over the years, we've tried to caulk. We've had some lateral cracking, we have some spalling of brick, which means that water's got behind the brick, it's frozen, and it's popped the face of the brick off. Now, all of those areas need to be attended to so we're not having this water infiltration We have lintels. Essentially, what a lintel is, is a piece of heavy angle iron used to support the brick structure above a window. And if you look at the picture on the left, you're gonna see that, it's a little hard, but there's rusting going on there, it's deteriorating, the caulking has failed, it needs to be attended to. The picture on the right, again, you can't really see it well, but the sill is also showing some areas where water is getting in behind this glass block, so it needs to be attended to. We have some more caulking that has failed, we have doors that are rusting out at the bottom that need to be replaced, and we have some areas where we did some capital work a number of years ago to put what's called the drive-in.
Better.
That's better. Drive-in, which is insulation and concrete, over the windows in an area where there was no insulation, so it helped insulate it and it helped waterproof it. That area needs to have its caulking readdressed. In every project you do, you have to do what's called a SECR, it's an environmental quality review act of attestation, all right? And basically, that's a responsibility of youth board. And what that means is that you have hired an architect and an engineer to review the project that you're proposing. They've looked at it, they've said, "We believe that the project is either going to have an impact or not have an impact." And in our case, this project we're talking about is a type 2 SECR project, which means it will have minimal or no environmental impact whatsoever, and that tonight, you will be presented with a resolution stating, and that will be your attestation, that this project will not affect the environment whatsoever. With that, do you have any questions? That's the $100,000 budget.
Will all of it be completed, what you've shown us, with the $100,000, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Then what's the timeframe?
We plan to do it.
Over the summer?
The summer. That would be the goal. Once the budget's passed, we can work with the architect, get the plans done, and put it out to bid.
David?
Well, there's an advertisement period, and I think it's usually, what? John, I would say three to four weeks.
Yeah, I'd say 30.
David, since we're fortunate enough to have architects here tonight, are we able to hear from them if there is or is not environmental impact?
Can you pull your mic down?
The question is, since we're fortunate enough to have architects here tonight, can we hear from the architect if there is or is not an environmental impact for this project?
As Dave mentioned, the SECR is before you, I believe, tonight in the board package indicates a type 2 action, which basically means that there's the higher, the other types of actions have to do with affecting a certain amount of area of your property, like actual land space, okay, or adding building additions to your building over like 10,000 square feet. This one, because the nature of the project falls into the category of type 2, which has to do with routine maintenance of your existing facilities, which puts it in the category of not having an environmental impact.
Okay.
Is there any way that it would come under budget at all, David?
Well, what has to happen is, we have to keep it under the $100,000.
Okay, so.
That's the goal. If you go over the $100,000, it becomes a regular project, you don't get your aid next year.
Is there a minimum that has to be at least a certain amount?
Well, the way that we usually try to structure it is to make this a good type of project for that, where you can structure it to be larger than the $100,000, but only do up to the $100,000, okay? And that's through the use of alternates and things like that. The idea is to take advantage of every dollar that you can get out of a capital outlay project, and so you get the return investment following.
Now, I might have missed it, but we've had so much conversation about the length of time that it takes SED to go through stuff, and this does not take that time, so if you could address that, and then also that we had this in the budget last year and removed it, so if you could refer to both of those.
I can tell you from the conversation that I had with Carl when I went to the conference this year, at that time, and that was about two months ago, they had over 820 projects in the queue.
At SED?
At SED, okay? Now, what he told us is the slowdown that really occurs is when you start dealing with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. It's not so much the architectural stuff, and that's the reason we chose to use this project to do what is an architectural project and not deal with plumbing, electrical, and heating, ventilation, or any of that stuff, because the timeframe to get the project through SED will be much, much shorter, and I would say.
Currently, SED, architectural is eight to 10 weeks.
Yep.
Mechanical, electrical, plumbing is eight to nine months.
Okay.
So it makes sense to do this kind of a project right now.
Do you have other buildings with the same problems?
I do.
You do? So why are you choosing GLP first?
Basically, because, A, like I said, we're talking about the potential to lease space, and once you have a private entity using that space, they no longer become classrooms, you cannot do a project and get any aid on it. You could do a project, but it's all budget money, so you won't get any money back from the government for doing whatever it is you're gonna do.
So if you do it now, you jump in front. Can you go back to that slide that actually showed the blueprint and just talk about the flood? Since you, I know, sorry.
The last big flood or November?
But since you've got the picture up there, last week's flood, well, he could talk about November, too, it's a good point, real good point. It was like the second or third slide? That one?
Okay. If you take a look at the building, left to right, the left side front section, so it's, in other words, the bottom area, all right, was where the flooding occurred.
Right around the pink dot.
If you look at the two little slivers that are right in the middle of it.
Where the pink, there's pink dots there, David?
Yeah, there's pink dots. The one on the right that has the line going that says pink areas needed is noted as general base during the cracking, okay? In that one, we had a stall created in a project a number of years ago, and I don't know, I didn't look it up how long ago it was, that created a handicap stall. It was done by removing a toilet and tapping the plumbing. Tapping is just putting a pipe plug into it. But what's happened is, over a period of time, the water actually just rotted the plug up, and without getting into a long story about what happened, our pressure in that line changed last year, and we had so much pressure behind it, it pushed that rotted plug out. It happened early in the morning, on Thursday morning, and we had about one-inch stream of water coming out of there for, I would guess, probably three hours. So we had that entire wing with anywhere from a half inch to four inches of water in it, and it extended a little beyond that down to the, well, the first room on the right, which is the music room, if you're familiar with the building at all. It didn't get in there, we caught it quick enough when our first people came in. We shut the water off, we plugged it, we started the cleanup process, and the teachers, that are the omen's job of cleaning out their materials, and a lot of things got wet, and if you drive by GLP right now, you're gonna see a huge dumpster, which reminds me, we need to get that going, if you would please.
If it's not full, we can fill it up from anywhere else.
Oh, it's always full.
Okay.
Okay. That is just full of materials that are.
What?
Wet and destroyed. So I have to give my staff credit, the teachers' credit, and everybody that was involved in it, the administration. Within roughly a day to a day and a half, we had everything to the point where the water was completely cleaned up, and we had a company committee with dehumidification equipment and fans to supplement what we had, and when did we put kids back in?
Yesterday, Monday morning.
Monday morning, okay? So they did a great job.
So you also checked some of the other plugs, too?
We did. We checked four other ones. We found that three of the four were in the same condition, ready to go. So we're making an effort in all of the buildings that we know that this has occurred, where a toilet was taken out, to make sure that whatever caps were used are still in good shape.
Did we document everything that we threw out for insurance purposes?
Yes.
And everything?
We took a picture of everything.
Pictures and everything. And actually, that's where we're at right now. We're waiting for an adjuster to get here so that we can hand in the information and see what they want us to do.
You have some people coming in to check it out afterwards, too, for mold and water damage. Can you talk about that for a moment?
Yep. We're gonna have my colleagues come in and do some air sampling, just to make sure we don't have any airborne mold or any issues with the area of mold growth, but we have, there is a little waiting period, because mold just doesn't stop, you know, the minute it gets wet. So based on what I've seen, and based on the guys that were here to dry it out, I think we're in pretty good shape. But until we do the actual air testing, we won't know for sure. But we are gonna have that done.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I know I was down there, I think it was 3:00.
Yep, 13.
They did a good job, yeah. And lined the fields, too, outside. Other questions on SECR or on the capital outlay?
Okay, great. Thanks, you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Capital Market Advisors, Ryan Newmeister?
Good evening. Thank you for having us here today. I'm with Capital Markets Advisors. We've worked as the district's financial advisor for.
Do you have a cellphone?
For many years now. What we do primarily is help districts both plan for selling bonds and notes for capital projects, as well as planning capital projects from the financial side, financial aspect of capital projects. Right now, we're working with the district, as well as Wright Young and campus, as far as trying to help size a capital project for the district. There are four key points, and what we're doing is trying to narrow down on how we're gonna size this project. The first thing we're doing is using the capital reserve fund. The district set up a capital reserve fund a number of years ago, and they've slowly been putting money into this capital reserve fund. The advantage of using the capital reserve fund is two-fold. One, you're receiving aid on those funds for over a period of 15 years for renovation, reconstruction project, that you won't be actually paying debt service on, so you can see that aid coming back to you to help you grow the project. And the other piece of that is that you are receiving aid on the cost of interest, even though you're not borrowing the money. The state aids not only the principal piece, but as well as a percentage of the interest coming back to the district, the district is paying, so it helps kind of cover two different pieces to that. So we're looking at what's in the capital reserve fund, and how much money the district has put away, you know, if they're gonna continue to put money away for the next couple of years, looking toward when the financing would be for this capital project. The other piece of, another point that we're looking at right now is the percentage of, how much of the percentage of the project is gonna be debatable. Without knowing the scope of the project, we're not gonna know for sure what, how much is gonna be debatable, but we've been working with the folks over at Wright, and they've used in the past 85% of the project being debatable going forward, saying it's a very conservative number, and this way, we can kind of look at that going forward, saying, okay, about 85% of the project is gonna be debatable, for how much you're gonna be receiving that from the state for the capital project. The other piece of this, another piece, is the building aid ratio. The district currently receives 80.3% of the building aid ratio back to the state for the debatable portions. So in essence, the district is receiving 80 cents on every dollar that's spent on a capital project from the principal side. That number does fluctuate every year, that is a number that changes every year, and it's a number that's actually based on assumptions that were from five years ago. So what happened was, most districts throughout Western New York, they've actually been seeing their aid ratios decrease over the past couple of years, and that was because of 2008. So if we start looking back a couple of years ago, we see that particularly Downstate took a big hit regarding their assessment valuations, that they weren't growing as quickly, whereas Western New York stayed pretty stable. So that made Western New York start to even off a little bit more with Downstate.
Was that due to the Wall Market, Wall Street market issue?
So during the housing market in 2008, when the assessment values kind of, you know, fell down Downstate, what happened was, we started to level off a little bit, so aid started being spread throughout the state on a percentage basis, and so Western New York in general saw a lot of their aid ratios decrease for a couple of years. What's happening now is that we're looking back at 2010, where we're starting to see the recovery, where we're starting to see Downstate start to build itself back up again, whereas Western New York has just continued to grow at the same old steady pace, but because we're seeing that jump, we're seeing that the aid ratio for most districts throughout Western New York, including Eden, has stabilized and are expected to continue to stabilize going forward.
When a project is done, I mean, do we lock in at that 80-some percent, or does it change from year to year when we reimburse it?
It changes year to year.
Okay.
Crazy, huh? Crazy? I know.
And the last point is the budgetary appropriation side. How much is the district gonna put aside on a local share impact, or, you know, what can the district do on their side as far as contributing to the project on a yearly basis as well? What we've noticed is that for Eden, they have, you folks have debt falling off in the 18, 19 fiscal year. So what we've noticed is that because of previous capital projects that is falling off, we're able to kind of supplement with a new project into that space. And right now, what we're doing is taking a strong look at how much aid you were receiving on those capital projects. So right now, we're spending a lot of time, a lot of projects over the past few years, Eden has not had a substantial capital project in many years, but they have done small projects, and so what we're doing is, we're trying to track down to the state how much aid is being received on some of those projects where there was no debt for. So we just wanna make sure that the difference between the debt service being paid and the aid coming in is a correct number to use as far as, you know, how much the district can fit into that space going forward. So right now, we're using those four factors to try to create a very minimal impact on the district as possible, using those factors to create a sizing for the project. Those are really the four points as far as how we're going about sizing the project. We do not have all, you know, we don't have the number quite yet for you, once we figure out more from the state regarding the aid side of that, we'll be able to probably, sorry, put down our number of works back in the next couple of weeks.
Ryan, why is there building aid based on the numbers from five years ago?
It's just where the formula works. So the state, what the state does is it looks back at the assessment values of the district, as well as the average assessment value and raw data, or the student base from five years ago. It's really more, I think, from a planning standpoint from their side. What they used to do, what they used to do is, many years ago, is when a project was undertaken by a district, the state would reimburse the district on their aid ratio in the time in which they wanted to repay the project, and what happened was, many districts were, they'd start multimillion-dollar projects in one or two years, and then say, "Okay, we're gonna pay it off next year," and the state would have to reimburse them the next year. What the state did after that is, no, we can't, we need to be able to plan for their own budgets better, and this way, their plans, so what they do is they say, for renovation, reconstruction projects, they're gonna pay back over a 15-year period, and for new building projects, it's a 30-year period. So what we're right now, as far as I can tell, the districts really were looking at, the majority of the project being a renovation, reconstruction project, which would pay back over a 15-year period.
Can you talk a little also about what is debatable? So you talk about 85% of the project as an assumption being debatable. What does that really mean?
Sure. Sean, who I've just called already tonight, a little bit.
Thanks, Sean.
I can help you a little bit with that. Debatable items typically have to do with spaces that are used by students. That's the most basic term, but there are a number of items that fall under maintenance or repairs that are also debatable. In fact, most items under maintenance or repairs can be considered debatable with some exceptions, and that's where the determining that comes into play. Things like painting, simple, more routine-type maintenance things are not found to be debatable. Furnishings, things like tables, chairs, desks, certain types of equipment.
So if we wanted to paint the gym?
No. I mean, it's, many of the things like, let's just say we were renovating the gym, okay? Oh, it would make a lot of sense to renovate the gym and put in all this new stuff and not paint the walls. However, SED looks at painting as something that is routine maintenance. Other things like, even getting into, we have some, we've got some considerations for some site features, okay? The state education department will aid the replacement of parking and paving in your parking lots, basically removing everything, all the way down to the subbase, putting in a new subbase, and putting in new asphalt topper and all that other kind of stuff. But they won't provide aid for simply resurfacing your existing surfaces. They look at that as maintenance, same as like painting and striping. So there's a lot of little bits and pieces that they pull out of there, and the Downside is that they don't give you that determination until the project is over. Once the project is completed, we pay for all the work.
And then they change the number every year. That's great.
They'll come back to you, and we'll argue through some things if need be, but for the most part, it's a conversation over what things they consider to be debatable, what things that they don't consider to be debatable. That's in the simplest terms, let's put that way. Any questions on that portion?
Nope. Are they good? You okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Model UN competition, Mrs. Pace? She looks very proud.
So I guess I'm at a club, we're planning on getting that set up. I'm Mrs. Pace, some of you have known me from town and kids and et cetera, et cetera. I'm from Model UN. So tonight, I'm gonna let my students talk about Chicago, talk about Model UN in general, and our most recent competition in St. Onondoye. I have some of the awards on here that they earned. Ally was third vice. Ali was third vice premier of China at Chicago, and won best delegate for her committee, which was quite an accomplishment as a ninth grader. So I'll let the girls take it away. This is part of what they do. Okay, so as she said, we're from Model UN. Model UN is an organization of students who work to develop better researching, public speaking, debating, writing, critical thinking, teamwork, and leadership skills. Basically meaning that we go into simulated areas, and we create higher level thinking, putting ourselves in the places of countries, debating topics, what we do. We are the Model United Nations when we're in there. We don't model it anymore, that's like what we are when we're in there. That's what we put ourselves in those places, and we create an entire environment around us, basically battering situations around the world. Those are actually a picture of our roommates who are from the Cayman Islands against rain.
Nice.
So it was international, but we met people from different countries, different places, including our foreign exchange student Mark. He met people who actually spoke his language, which was fun for him, because as Isabel knows from Mark telling her, it was really hard for him to even speak English, so finding someone who spoke his own language gave him a sense of home. Model UN is aligned with Common Core, which is a big thing right now. It's research and evidence-based, it's fair, understandable, consistent, aligned with college and career expectations, and based on rigorous content, application of knowledge to higher order thinking skills. It also promotes cooperative learning and multicultural education. No standards, educational curriculum that develops understanding of power and international relations, global political perspectives, teamwork and leadership, and working under stress. We have something called unmoderated caucuses in Model UN, meaning all the countries get together and basically set at tables and fight over what the best answer is, but we do it in a civilized manner, but probably wasn't the best word to use. We do it in a civilized manner, and we, that's what global political perspectives, teamwork especially, and leadership at that point in a Model UN competition, that's when someone really stands out, is their leadership abilities. The pursuit of research and contribution in the field of experiential and international education. You have to know exactly what you're talking about. If you don't know what you're talking about, you won't do well. We put in hours and hours worth of research on top of our homework every day, on top of our sports. Everyone works extremely hard. Leadership skills, diplomacy, I talked a little about that earlier. Time management, public speaking, college and career alignment. Time management and public speaking is huge. You have to learn to know what you're saying, and on time, and on topic. You only get a certain amount of time when you're on a speaker's list. Helps you with things like this coming up, speaking to people. It can be a little scary. Research, we have to, as Ali said, understand our countries completely. We have to become the country. We have to take their ideas and make them our own, so that we can say the same things that they would. Perceive global relations and current events, we have to understand everything that's going on in the world right now, because everything's sort of connected. When you're in there, you need to know who's going to say what, who's going to support you, and who isn't. It's evidence-based and tracked and in-depth. My state standard is Model UN standard, it's overlapping, research and evidence-based. It basically does this slide, if you can see it. There you go. College and career expectation preparation, that's a huge one, that bullet point number two, college and career expectations. If you put Model UN on your college, I don't know, put it on your applications, you put it on your resumes, people automatically know that you have leadership skills, you have public speaking skills, and that you have multiple different skills that can be used in any work experience, any educational program. It kind of makes you stand out a little more, including why most colleges have Model UN as a club. So even for, most of our club is made up of primarily freshmen, ninth graders. We're already working our way up that ladder to becoming basically the best you could be in Model UN, so I guess with that. Chicago, we went to Chicago in December, and it was an amazing opportunity. It was the first conference for the majority of the students in the club, including me and Ali. We had a wonderful time, and this is when we were able to take home an award. That's just some pictures that we took from Chicago. They had a wonderful welcome dinner, where we listened to, listened to multiple different politicians, not only like, they brought in actual people that were, I know this sounds horrible, but they were important. They were really important. It was scary, like, there were 8,000 students in this room from all over the world, listening to one person basically tell them how they made it, and how they're important, and why they're important. And those are just, not only did we have welcoming days, and many people were so friendly, but we also got to see sights of Fisher Happy, and that was, that was pretty cool. Some arguments, we saw this, we didn't go into the Sears Tower, but we saw, we walked around, went to markets, and then, of course, we got out of business with the whole, it was scary, walking into that dining room with 8,000 people, and feeling this big, but then getting into your simulation room and feeling like you're on top of the world because you know exactly what you're doing. Like Ali said earlier, we were able to room with people from the Cayman Islands, and that was just amazing. We got to listen to, they have something called sofa music, and that's sort of like pop, like up here, it's very popular. Everybody knows that music, and it's gorgeous down here, down there. Like, their weather always cooperates. So it was really interesting to hear about that from them.
Their weather always cooperates.
Which is something we don't know a lot of. Those are our friends.
Have you kept in touch?
Oh, my, yes.
Yes?
I didn't know that was on there. Wow. My goodness. And St. Bonaventure. Oh, my goodness. This was a smaller competition. It was primarily schools in Eden, so, or in New York, sorry. So it wasn't people from the Cayman Islands, but it was still really interesting to meet the people. You were represented in every committee. And a lot of the students in the club that don't really talk, they're not very outspoken, they had an opportunity to stand up, to state their opinion. It was really an excellent opportunity. It was a lot smaller, kind of like, not, every competition's important, but it was more of a downgrade from Chicago, which gave people, Chicago was our first competition, it's our first time in Model UN. And that was like, kind of, that was our expectations for everything with Chicago. So when we got to St. Bonaventure, it was kind of like a, we know how to do this. So for the student that, like Isabel said, don't speak a lot, it was a lot nicer for them, they felt a lot more comfortable. We are getting a new advisor, Mrs. Farley, she's slowly transitioning to become the advisor for Model UN. Mrs. Pace is stepping down from her position. Honored to have a new and dedicated, experienced advisor, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Pace for all of her time.
Yes, absolutely.
Which also leads us to the point that, I brought it up at a board meeting I spoke at, I think about a month ago, but being our new advisors coming up, Mrs. Farley, I, funding the club would be under $1,000 because of her stipend, is what would need to be funded if that was.
So the board did approve the funding for that, so now it will go forward for our budget vote. And I would just like to say that all of this was done by funding by the students this year, because this was a club that was cut from the budget last year. So extremely impressive, all of you, including Mrs. Pace's work.
I think this, I don't know if you have the actual numbers, but in our treasury, we were the Model UN club that had the highest budget in their treasury.
Wow.
Although we, right now, although we weren't funded, we had the most amount of money that any club had ever had.
Very nice.
Nice.
Mr. Servoni, could you turn the lights back on?
How big is the club?
How many kids are in the club?
Um, 23, yeah, currently. About 20, 20s. And then, we, and I'd like, my, I, guys, just have a couple, like, my junior high, we started at junior high.
Nice.
On Tuesday, on Tuesdays, for a half an hour after school, and my senior high guys have come in and, and observed, and they, they're really impressed with these guys. And I've got 15 junior high members that are, will be moving up through the ranks.
So will you be like advisor-elect, is that?
Emeritus.
Are they just going to let you go sit back? That's right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to stay with the junior high, and I'll be helping with Mrs. Farley.
I think it's great that the seventh and eighth, seventh and eighth grade?
Amazing, my seventh.
I think it's fabulous you guys are involved.
Did you have to qualify to go to Chicago, or how did you come about going?
You didn't have to qualify, it was kind of like a, you send in that you want to go, and they respond back with whether or not, basically that you're capable of going. And we got a yes, so we went and came up with an award.
Good.
How many students went to Chicago?
Um, seven. Not all of our students could go, due to like affordability and time, they had to take the time, their parents couldn't. Because I was about 12 kids that went to Chicago this year.
Nice.
And the nice thing about Chicago is Eden has been there several students, you know, and so they, they do expect, pretty nice, they expect a high level of ability from the Eden kids. And I've been told that by them. They've been impressed with the kids from Eden. Also, the junior high Model UN, it doesn't only happen with the junior high kids, but also with the senior high Model UN. We learned, they have, just like kind of we're talking to you all now, they have a chair in section where you basically run the Model UN. So we get to learn their position and be on the other side of that. And the senior high group is putting on a, like a mini conference for the junior high kids, made for, so they're running a conference.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shake the mouse.
Shake the mouse.
Shake the mouse.
Food tasting from personal touch?
Good? So Tom, do you want to do a little lead-in, or is Debbie going to do it?
Okay, well, it's been a couple of years since we've had personal touch. I mean, it hasn't happened in my time where you guys have had a chance to present, but given the fact that there have been so many discussions with the national food standards, we're primarily, not stealing any of your thunder here, so, but primarily, we are done with the new food standards. So it really was a good opportunity to talk about standards before, and the new standards, and actually show you guys, and what better way to show you than to actually taste it, what the new standards taste like, what the old standards taste like, so.
Is this like a blind test, though?
We're not doing blind today.
Oh, we're not doing blind? I thought we were blindfolding you, I missed that conversation then.
We're blindfolding you, Sandy.
There you go, I won't know.
Are these actual portion sizes that kids get?
No.
Okay. These are adult sizes?
That would be about the portion. You put the two together, that, no, you've got one, you have two.
So this would be one piece?
Is this old and new together?
Yes.
And we don't know which one's which, and you're not telling us? Okay.
We have to choose which one is better?
So what's the, what's the rule?
Yeah, what is the rule?
And would you introduce yourself, too? That would be helpful.
Yes, and operations for all the services.
Thank you, Sue.
So, we'll start back to the beginning, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act came into effect in 2012, 13. Before then, what we did, we had a new, what's called nutrient-based menu plan, and what we would do is, for the week, we had to analyze the menu, and they had to meet certain criteria. They had to meet fat, calories, it had to fit into what the guidelines were at that time. And when students came, we had to offer five items, and all those five items, they had three of them, they had to be on tray for a food-reimbanceable lunch. So when the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act passed, it got passed by USDA in June of 2012. And at that time, there was a lot of buzz in the media, and it was getting a bad rap breaking very beginning before it even came into the school business. So when they came in September, what this new act was saying was, we're going to go to a, a food-based menu planning, which means that we still have to meet all the nutritional guidelines, but now, they're going to call these components. And we have to have five components, still the students had to take three of those components on their tray for a food-reimbanceable lunch. With all those three components, it had to be a vegetable or a fruit. And all those vegetables, they had different categories that we had to menu during the majors. There had to be dark green, a yellow vegetable, and it had to be, you still had to meet the guidelines of the fat, the calories, salt. And they implemented this over five years. The first year was the biggest hit because that's when the major changes came into effect, what had to be changed. And it had, we had some.
So that would have been the 12, 13 school year?
12, 13.
Okay.
Every school showed a, we, I, we operate 28 western, all the school districts. Every school was there, and it's heard all over the country how it had affected participation. A lot of it, because we think, was because of media, because it, there was a big buzz going probably before the kids even started, so when they came into the school year, they weren't going to try anything that we had on the menu, because it was supposedly going to be all the sweet product, and they had to have their wages, their stuff. The whole idea of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act was to swipe, totally state, totally state problem, and, so they're not, we're necessarily saying this was happening in school, but what they're saying is, well, they have control, the way they, they get full, they have control of the school. And their thought is, and it is with the food bases, that children should be able to eat a balanced meal, they should be eating their food, their vegetables, and all the carbs, and the dairy. And so when you hear that the kids are saying, well, we're still hungry, we're not getting enough food, because they were used to eating all the carbs, they weren't used to it being a balanced lunch. If they were to eat everything that was off, that they could eat on their tray, they can have up to a couple of fruit, they can have up to a couple of vegetables, they can have their dairy, they can have their protein, and their grain, they would be full. But the problem is that they don't want things that are offered. They don't want the vegetables, they want, you know, the proteins offered, all of that. So, and also, another problem that came in with this act is that they're way ahead of the manufacturers, they were quite the, the product. So what they were saying, they're implementing the greens into the menu, we had 12% whole grains. Well, the manufacturers weren't even caught up with the product that they offered that did something with the kids. So that was, didn't go along the first year either. But it's coming along, and every year, we're getting, they're getting better and better products, and we're trying different things, they're trying different things. But we're never going to be able to give some, a pizzeria pizza right now, because it's, it's not the same. It's, you can get, when you go to a pizzeria, the kids are used to the white pizza dough, and we're serving whole grains, 51% whole.
So have you figured it out?
There are two different pizzas here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, can you talk about what they have in front of them?
One is the white pizza crust that we used to use before regulations, and the other one is what we use now, which is 200% whole grain.
So, in all fairness, I think what people should be doing as they're eating is, number one, can you see a difference? Number two, can you taste a difference? Do you even know which one's which? Some are going to be very obvious, like with, with the rolls, some are white, some are wheat. You can, you can see the look. That's one of the reasons we were going to do blindfold, because for some people, seeing the brown automatically turns some adults and kids off, saying, wait a minute.
But we trusted you to close your eyes and try it.
The texture was the same, almost, between the two.
The pizzas?
Not the pizza, but the bread.
The brown pasta, the brown bread, it all scares them off.
Just pass it down?
It's healthy.
Do you have to purchase the pasta from, I mean, if it's all about carb content, Dreamfield Pasta, the carb content is way down. So, and it's white. It's white pasta. If they're GMO, then that's deceptive on her part, as far as, uh, she's still feeding our kids GMOs. Pardon me?
It's GMO genetically modified organisms.
So if it has soy in it, most likely, it's, that seed itself, before it was even put in the ground, has pesticide in it, so all our kids are eating pesticides. So, I mean, she's big on non-GMO, are we feeding the kids through the school system, through her program, GMOs?
The program, the pasta itself is what we get from the government, um, this part of the monies.
Well, then that's kind of deceptive, I think I would write a letter and tell them. I mean, if this isn't flying with the kids, it's her program.
But do, but we don't know for sure one way or the other, right?
We don't know.
We don't know for sure one way or the other, Kirk. Okay.
I could tell you, let me read the label.
Okay.
So, it is, is this one they're using now? I think it tastes better. All the school districts, you know, it tastes, it was a good idea, and it is a good idea. Just the implementation of it, um, the younger kids are a lot more, um, are acceptable to the products. Um, I think that it's out there more, they're eating more than at home, so, they're, they're not as big of a problem as the older kids. The older kids have been used to eating the white, um, and where automatically just changing to wheat, and there was no implementation, you know, slowly, and they're nice.
Well, that's one of the beautiful things with today, is because we are fortunate enough to have with us Ms. Karstadt, and so we have a high school student, so, who can kind of, we wanted to make sure we had a student here, so they can say, this is actually what we get every day.
Now, what is the favorite meal that is the highest?
Well, it used to be pizza, when we started, and then we crust.
And is it, has it tailed off, or has it picked back up? What is now the most favorite? Or is it still pizza, but not at a higher margin?
Um, but we have to use the wheat, um, for any tortilla shell also.
Breakfast or lunch is one of the biggies.
Right.
French toast, that's huge.
And it's on the toast.
Sub, sublime does well.
When you put syrup on it, makes it taste better.
I mean, we've seen.
Tell the difference on the pizza?
Yeah, yeah, but not much, I mean, the, the difference between the two is small, thank you.
I like the healthier pizza, I think it tastes better.
I mean, realistically, it doesn't really look too much different.
Sure it does, this one looks, this one looks better.
I mean, a little bit brighter, but then again, you know, you left it in the heater too long.
We have seen about a 7% decrease in sales over the past couple of years, so, I mean, it is an issue that we are noticing.
Is it because there's less kids eating?
Um, that would be part of it, I mean, we have less students, that's clearly a part of it, but also, there's still less students who are buying lunch up here.
As a percentage.
Yeah.
But that's not just Eden.
No, it's not just here.
That's not just Eden, that's across, you have 28 different districts.
The only, really, the only one that we did see a change in when, um, this was implemented was very economically challenged, was the school districts, had a lot of free range rate, um, and it's, it's all over, it's all over, you know, you listen to all of these things, everybody's basically saying the same thing right now, um, with the, yeah.
With the, I know the, the big thing was the wheat and the carbs and so forth, but I mean, was there a push to reduce salt content, as well as sugar content, and so forth?
Salt is coming, every year it's going down.
The paper I'm now passed around shows you, like, try the cookies.
It's gonna ruin rest of my meal, you can't have the dessert before it happens.
You can't eat your cookies first?
There, you can tell a difference.
When we do the menu, we have to do a whole wheat plan, and they have to go through all the analysis, and I know last year they tried, um, they lifted the range.
Sorry, I'll.
The maximum, because when they first started, there was a middle and a maximum on protein and, um, grains, so you had to fit into, they could all fit into that range over a whole wheat time. Um, they lifted that because they heard so much feedback about it, we still being hungry, however, we still have to watch the calories, so we can only, you could only put on a certain amount of grain, because we still have calories that we're concerned about.
Which one's the better cookie, or the, the new cookie and the old?
Oh, I can tell.
You can tell.
You can tell.
Did you try?
You can tell.
The cookies are easy to tell, I think.
Yeah.
Everyone's gonna be jealous that I got to eat an old cookie.
That's great. This year, this year, implementation was with the, all the a la carte snacks, they had to, the grain, and it was very restrictive on the calories and the fat content, and we're, that's where they put the green.
That's okay.
The way she set it down, the old cookie will be on your left.
This is your old cookie. You can't even tell by looking that far away.
Well, she was supposed to set it down that way, the, the one on the left, the new on the right.
And one of the reasons, we, we did this, we did this for a couple of reasons. Number one, we wanted to let you guys know about the new standards, we're, for the most part, done being fully implemented with the standards, we still have sodium, which is coming, but that's down the road. So, pretty much what we have is pretty much what we're gonna get. But number two is, there have been a lot of, um, comments about the quality of food, and some of it, like the cookies, no offense, um, you can definitely tell, some you can't really tell as much, some, it's the visuals, and there are all different reasons as to some of the comments for the food. So part of it was just to test it, let you guys actually see what kids are actually being served, let you taste what they're actually being served, so you get a sense as to really, um, you know, what actually is being done in the cafeterias. Now, I have to ask, is this pretty much like the food you get every day?
Mm-hmm.
The stuff on the right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, not the old stuff, the new stuff, okay.
She's got inside context, she can get the old stuff.
Yeah, people are gonna be jealous, it's right, okay, yeah.
So.
No, we do just keep trying different things, as manufacturers come out with more successful products, be trying, um, still different things on the menu.
But also, I mean, if you look at the industry outside of school, too, there's a big health push with gluten-free, the, the wheat pastas.
Well, and even what Patty was talking about, the non-GMO.
We're starting to see more and more people adopt that, so, you know.
And it's like so much more susceptible to, to students, they're just, they're at home, they're being taught health, and they're, um, so, you know, I think it would have been a lot better if they, if they made it, just a little bit more slow, and they go in here, it's just.
One of the biggest things we hear is, because they're still hungry, this is what the kids have to choose from every day.
Both trays, or one or the other one? Can you walk it around?
One or the other.
No, no, I didn't mean it that way. I mean, is one old and one new, or they're just two choices? All right, I didn't mean it that way.
A full cup of vegetable, they can have a full cup of, uh, fruits, they have their grain, they have their dairy, and they have their protein.
We always offer two fruits, one of them fresh, and usually the others canned, we always offer two vegetables, and then there's their grain.
Do we have the, that intense milk here?
No, it would never pass the guidelines.
What's the sugar content in your juice?
Yeah, how about the?
Decent amount of food.
I'd be fine.
They don't wanna take the fruit, they don't wanna take the.
It's offer versus serve.
Yeah, I know, but in most juices, I mean, you can have 35 grams of sugar per survey.
Do you sell the, do you sell the juice?
We sell just the whole ounce, or, yes.
Debbie, can I put you on the spot? Um, so, one of the things, and I've heard Patty make a couple suggestions, one of the things I know that you guys have here is a food committee. Can any of the board members sit on the food committee if they want to?
They can sit on the food committee, the advisory committee, um, we have parents, we have teachers, Kevin kinda heads it up, Liz sits on it, um, anybody can join in, it would be great, if you wanna come and sit, give your suggestions.
When, who would they see, when, when does it meet? All that sort of good stuff.
Um, we've done, we usually do two a year, so, um, we don't have one yet until the fall.
Do they see you, do they see Pat?
Uh, either one.
Okay.
We can send them the dates when we have it set up.
How big is personal touch, as far as their buying power, do, how much do they buy local? Do they buy from our Eden Valley area? Do you know?
Hope not.
Uh, I'm a provider in, um, the local provider, and we, um, the USDA mandates that we give a lot of the produce comes from, um, it's from the local area. That district area is, I believe, they, we set, so it comes from local.
So what do y'all normally see in the trash can afterwards? Is that the vegetables?
That's a great question, the fruit, the vegetables.
Fruit is the last thing on the line, so when they get there, and the cashier says, you don't have enough to make a complete lunch, they grab an apple, a lot of the ones in carriage.
And in all honesty, because I have to audit all three of the cafeterias, elementary, GLP, and here, and I would have to say, the ladies, God love those ladies, they are great, because they're like, hon, you forgot to take, and, and they get them too, I mean, they do, you know they don't want it, but they're like, okay.
We have a great staff.
Yes, you do. The kids love your staff, they have some, and she's nodding.
Jenny's my best friend.
Is there anything you can do, like, um, if the kids wanna be healthy and they just want bottled water, it's still a buck. Why can we reduce the price of the water if the kids, you know, don't want the sugar juice, or don't drink milk?
Well, the water isn't, um, there's certain categories that we have to give them if they don't, like, if they're, um, they don't have to take milk, actually.
Can you get water in place of milk?
Yeah, can you get?
Not bottled water.
But, is there a way to fix that?
Yeah, is there a way to fix that?
Sometimes I just want like a buck.
It gets smaller, smaller.
Yeah, the little one, something.
The government tells us what lunch is going to consist of, and part of that lunch is your dairy, your milk, and you don't have to take that, but there's no substitution for milk, because that dairy has to be one of the choices for you.
And if we look at the water, it, it's a cost issue, because, I don't know if you realize, but that whole meal has to cost us like 85 cents, and 17 or 18 cents of that is dairy, is the milk. So, rely on the government food economies to make up part of that meal, um, but that has to be taken into consideration, too. And that's why they did pass a, in year one, there was also the regulations that there has to be access to water for the students to go in, to water fountain, or a, you know, that they need a cup of water, with their meal.
So, I know I've asked this before, but I'll ask you guys, since you're here. The kids are still hungry, they want double lunch. When they buy a double lunch, they're only getting the slice of pizza.
Technically, there is no double lunch.
But they're being charged the same price for the whole thing.
Yes, because the first lunch is reversed, the first lunch, the, um, school gets paid for some of that lunch, and so that's, it's, it subsidizes the cost of that meal.
So the kids are able to actually get the carb, but not the extra apple, or the healthy stuff?
Well, they get it, it's just, beyond that first lunch, that the government has to pay for.
So they would have to basically do it a la carte?
Yes, they do that.
That's, that needs fixed, too.
You know, I understand, I.
Let's understand.
Oh, I understand what they're saying.
Added extra cost.
Yeah.
Are the kids willing to pay the extra cart for the whole meal, because they're, where the government's not subsidizing, or we're gonna increase our budget to cover the extra cost?
Everything costs something.
And the way the whole process works, if you can't say, um, well, the pizza, we're gonna sell it for a dollar, and it only costs us 80 cents, because the way the government has an outline, and it has to go through a conversion factor, and, from, it's really confusing, but from an a la carte sale, the school gets part of that money, and we get part of that money. So the state sets a conversion factor, and you have to take the price that we sell it, divided by the conversion factor, which is 3.35, multiply it by our prices, and, so we get a portion of it, and the school gets a portion of it. So, of the pizza that they're charging a dollar seventy-five, we might get a little over a dollar, and we don't get any more reimbursement for that, so we have to pay for the, of the pizza, of that little over a dollar, and the, um, and the profit, and then also, and the school gets the rest of it. And that's how all of the alternative works, anything that's sold will occur, and that's a state mandate, you can't do a second launch, that's not something that, that's mandated by the state, you don't have a one.
On your list, it says meats and meat alternatives, or alternates. What are meat alternates?
Any other proteins that fit into the meat category?
Such as?
Cheese, eggs, yogurt.
What are your chicken nuggets made out of? Are they?
You answered that so tentatively, that was funny, sorry.
It's a what?
Chicken and grilled meat.
I, I think you may potentially have someone who might sit on, on, uh, that group.
That'd be awesome, Patty, that'd be really good.
Because again, though, it's really your program, where we can do whatever you want, you can spec, whatever you wanna spec on.
Food service program, okay.
Um, and that's what we will, you know, in my top.
The district's program.
Um, what you have.
It's our lunch, not their.
Just like if you're most of the grocery store, and buying all that, you know, if you wash, you can get the grilled chicken tenders instead of the. But it's your, it's your program, you try it, or what you want is the school to do, and you take that, those procurements, and what you can reach, the price that much it will cost to run that program.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
I just want to put out there, I gave Barb Thomasou my cookie. And you ate the cookie? Did you eat the old cookie, or the new cookie?
The old, good.
The old, good half, yes. Thank you again, very much.
Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Next. consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through M.
Should be in N as in Nancy.
N.
Discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Anyone care to, in approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups, the board will review all statements and then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance here at the meeting are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, there is a two-minute limit. Anyone wanna speak?
Hi, Colleen.
Good evening, I'm Colleen Cutt, ETA Association President. All of our is passing out a resolution that the ETA Executive Board passed at their 413 meeting. It is a resolution to support the refusal, I refuse movement to oppose high-stakes testing. Whereas instructional and curricular decisions should be in the hands of classroom professionals who understand the context and interests of their students, and the education of the children should be grounded in developmentally appropriate practice. The Common Course Data Assessments are not transparent, and that teachers and parents are not allowed to view the tests, and item analysis will likely not be made available. Therefore, be it resolved that the ETA opposes standardized high-stakes testing that is currently pushed by the federal and state government. currently pushed by the federal and state governments. Because this testing is not being used to further instruction for our children, to help children, or to support the educational needs of children. The ET also advocates for an engaged and socially relevant curriculum that is student-based and supported by researchers. The ETA will support NICID as it lobbies the New York State Word of Education to eliminate the use of high-stakes testing. We advocate for an engaged and socially relevant curriculum. We will support the constitutional rights of our members and parents of our students who have their children refuse to take the grade three through grade assessment. We will work with all our members and affiliates to increase support for those in opposition to these tests. And we just wanted you to know where we stand and to give you each of a copy. Thank you.
You weren't even at a minute. You got a whole nother minute if you want.
It's okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Colleen.
My name is Nicole Weyersky and I'm a parent. I'd like to let you know as a parent of a third grader and a first grader in this district, how I've recently been disappointed in our district. Up until this point, I've had nothing but good things to say about Eden Central Schools. I chose to refuse the New York State test for my third grade daughter, yet the test was placed in front of her. When I questioned this practice with the building administrator, I was told it was district protocol. I asked why? Why do you put my child in the middle between the government and parents? I made the decision for my child. Don't put her in that position. That morning, instead of telling her to have a great day as she walked out the door, I reminded her, "Do not put your name on that paper." Also, I learned that there was an idea being tossed around of an alternative assessment for students who refused, or excuse me, according to a district administrator, administrator, a parallel task to the state assessments. The district administrator told me it would be used to show growth in E L A and M.A. to pass on to next year's teacher. A report card does that. A teacher or parent can do that through word of mouth. That idea was and is ridiculous. Finally, I was appalled to hear on the news Friday night that my district was being accused of developing a rubric to be used as extra credit for students who put effort into their state test. The district that I was so proud of, I have now begun to wonder where their intentions lie. I know my first intentions are for my children. You have let me down. I leave with a final question. Who is in charge of making these decisions?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
New business, resignations, none. Down to B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective and serve to the district pursuant. Their two shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Appointment, part-time family consumer science teacher upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Courtney-
Hanania.
Hanania, will, who is initially certified in family and consumer science, be appointed as a point five F T E, family and consumer science teacher, effective April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Salary is based on bachelor's step one.
Second. Discussions?
Courtney is here, and I would just like to say that Courtney took this test in September, and it just came to us April fifteenth as a past exam, and that she has been working as a teacher like any other teacher in the district, but really as an extended sub because she had to wait six months for the state to get this to us. And I just want to thank you because there's been no difference between you and anyone else, and that is just so incredibly professional. You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Courtney. Well deserved.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, spare access points be accepted from BOSI's Erie Two at no charge.
Second. Discussions?
I, I'd like to read what they are. These are, does everybody know what these things are?
They're the wireless access points for computers and mobile phones and stuff like that.
And they're donated from BOSI's? They will become a part of our existing system and will not be individually assessed-
Taxed.
Taxed.
So there is no value to them because they're part of a larger system? Since there's no actual value, they don't become part of our fixed assets?
Any further discussions? Questions? All in favor? Aye. Abstentions? Motion carried.
Approve varsity softball team overnight trip. The, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the varsity softball overnight trip to the Far Star North Star Elite Weekend Tournament in Cicero, New York, April twenty-fifth through April twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen be approved.
Second. Discussions?
What does that trip pertain to as far as cost for us?
They fundraise.
Okay.
Any further discussions?
Yeah, I'd like to know if they, what does this, is, um-
Where is this not here?
Is it not here? I was going to say, like, it's not a state tournament?
No, it's not.
We're driving ourselves, like our parents.
I'm not worried about that, but what does it have to do with, um-
Are you going, Liz?
It said it's a pretty fancy, um-
Liz, pull the mic over. Tell everybody.
Hello? It's like, the, if you made it to the state competition last year or the year before that, I'm not sure if it was three years ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But you get, I think it's at least the last two years, you get invited to this tournament, and so we requested to play, like, double A and A schools, so we aren't going to be playing any schools like C, like our class, so-
Oh, wow.
Ms. Felicar requested that so that we would have a challenge, so-
You have a competition coming in here.
Yeah, nobody actually wins the tournament or anything. It's just to like go and have like better competition and kind of be rewarded for making it to states, so.
Do you do anything besides play softball while you're there?
Um, I don't know. We're going Saturday morning, we play two games, and then she said that there's a really cool mall nearby, so.
Okay. Bunch of girls.
Yeah, and then the next day, I think we play two more games, so.
Oh, you're busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're busy. Good luck.
We're excited.
Yeah, good luck.
Upon the recommendation of this-
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District cast one vote for five of the following candidates for the BOSI's Board of Ed.
I thought we had this figured out last-
That was nominations.
Oh.
This is mine.
You're not off the-
Who are the incumbents? You know?
Jerry Delos, I believe, Tom Fenton, Nancy Redkins, Nancy Stock.
Two, five, six, and seven so far.
I think that's it because one person dropped out.
And between Fruisberg, Fruitburg-
Fruisberg.
And Forestville, which one are comparable to Eden from a district?
Neither.
Neither?
How about the lady from East Aurora?
I think she's, oh, okay.
Geographically close, and close in size and mission, et cetera. So that would be two, five, six, seven, and four.
Okay.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Upon the-
Did you get that? Hold on a minute, real quick, you got that, Barb?
I got it. I got two, four, five, six, and seven.
Right, yes.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District at a public meeting held on April twenty-first hereby adopts a resolution approving the two thousand and fifteen sixteen tentative BOSI's administrative budget in the amount of two million nine hundred and three thousand six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second. Discussions?
I have a question. Sue Schnaffer's technology forty-five minute cut, was that put back in the budget?
This is different. This is your BOSI's administrative boat, but-
Oh, that's not our budget.
No. Well, you approved our budget at the last board meeting.
Okay. To that question, do we have an answer?
Can, let, I, I suggest finishing this one.
Okay.
And then we can, you can bring it back if you don't mind. It's okay.
Any other discussions?
No, sorry about that.
No, she catch, he keeps me on my toes.
All in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Approve two thousand and fifteen sixteen BOSI's service commitments upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand and fifteen sixteen commitment for BOSI's services be approved as presented.
Second. Discussions?
For this, what I would say is all of you have it. Part of that administrative budget for BOSI's, which all districts have to pay into, were a little over a hundred some thousand. That's part of the BOSI's budget that we actually have. What you have in your packets is what our commitments are now. The one thing I'd point out is it says some things are as billed. So we don't add the price on as billed until we get into the year and how much we actually use. So that is a working document, it changes as the year goes by. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Approve S E Q R process vote for capital outlay project that Dave Martin spoke about this evening. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the state environmental quality review process vote for the hundred thousand capital outlay project two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen be approved.
Second. Discussions? All in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for transportation personnel be adjusted as follows. Bus driver Robert Barton decreased point seven five, effective March twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen. Attendant Deborah Barton increased point five, effective February second, two thousand and fifteen.
Discussions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approve technology equipment for decommissioning. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, technology equipment as presented be decommissioned and recycled as necessary.
Second. Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approve appropriations increase. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand and fourteen fifteen appropriations be increased by five thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents to twenty-six million four hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and fifty-five cents to account for increased revenues.
Second. Discussions?
Can I ask that question here since it's about our budget?
We can, we can actually ask it down in, when we get to the board piece, would probably be the better, in my opinion.
And that extra money was for the junior, senior high school musical and eighteen dollars from the Great American fundraising for GLP.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Information and proposals, the business report?
I just want to check with the board if there's any specific places that you would like us to go to for budget outreach. Now, we have a list, the same list that we actually used last year, which includes most of the community groups, and I can pass it around. And maybe if I do pass it around, if you guys think of anyone in addition, if you can write it on there, we want to let as many people in the community know about our budget. So between Sandy, myself, any of you guys who want to, the more the merrier, that's for sure, so.
If you want to present, you just let us know.
So why don't I pass it around, and if there's more that you can think of that we have in here, we just want to get the word out.
So last year, we presented to the town board, we presented to the East Eden Fire Department, we also put it out there to VFW, American Legion, on the senior citizens, the EMS squad, so the churches, we're always looking to increase our outreach to anybody who wants. Of course, they can always come to the budget hearing on May fifth, but some people would like us to come to them.
You know, you, you make it sound really simple, and it's so complicated.
Which part?
All, the whole budget is.
We agree. We agree.
You know, it's-
You can come with me, though, Barb, if you want.
It is so complicated.
It is complicated. You're absolutely right. You're right. But that just shows me that you know a lot more, because now you know it's complicated. People don't know anything, thinks it's really simple, but it's not. It's kind of like the food, right?
That's it for me.
That's it for you?
Mm-hmm.
Superintendent's report, speed zone signs, and the GLP flood status.
Speed zone signs are here. Liz, are you driving?
Oh, yes.
Tell me about this. What's the, what's the buzz out there?
Uh, everyone's just complaining about how slow it is.
It's slow, isn't it? I mean, if you don't feel like you're going slow, you're speeding.
Cause they're like, "How do you really go forty-five down there?"
It's painfully slow.
I'm so sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if anybody's been pulled over yet?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Really?
Really? I was going to say, no, yes?
This new revenue is great for Eden.
I, is he, but are they ticketing yet or just pulling over? It was a ticket, too.
Really?
So there's a global connect going out this week, just as another reminder, is people have gotten used to it. I have to tell you, though, Liz, I think the kids have been better than the adults.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, because you guys are really slowing down, where sometimes I'm like, oh, you-
All the kids came in to me, like, kids that have like late arrival and stuff, they were like, "Liz, you have to put an announcement on to make sure," like, cause I was like, "There's a cop sitting there right now." And I was like, "Okay." I was like, "I'll let everyone know." So I literally was like, "Everyone drive slow, because there's a cop on the road."
So, we're going to put it in our newsletter. Oh, Mr., Lieutenant McCarthy also asked if there was something that we could put into the local papers. It would be great if it got picked up in the board notes, and then also a global connect out, because it's most of the same people that, that travel it all the time. So put the word out there. I didn't realize they were ticketing already. I saw Paula nodding her head. That wasn't you, was it?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And there's a certain, there's certain hours, too.
It's seven AM to six PM, just like on Main Street. We didn't want to confuse it. Yeah, yeah. And, and it's, it's easy to really take a look at your watch when you're driving down the street to see if it's really true. But I am incredibly grateful to those of you who are going twenty-five. It is slow. It's painfully slow. But as our beloved Sheila Harris would say, it, it's just another opportunity to be mindful of our children. And I thought that was a beautiful way to put it. Just be mindful that there's children walking here, children playing here.
Especially with the weather getting nicer.
When the weather's getting nicer now. Yep. So-
I also want to say now that the sidewalk signs are out, so please be aware of that.
And don't run them over. Right? Yep. They go out every morning and come in every night? Is that what happens? Okay. And you bring them in in the winter because of the snowplows, mostly?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And then the GLP flood status, for the most part, you heard that from Dave. Do you have any questions that you want to ask about that? Anybody? Everybody's good? Okay. And then there's one other. I sent it out district-wide, and I also sent it out to the board today, but if I, if everybody can see it, of the Hard Tales Magazine, our chopper club is featured in here on page thirty-two and on. It's a phenomenal article, and you can just simply Google Hard Tales Magazine and pull up the entire edition.
It's a first edition, isn't it?
This is sweet, it's very nice, great article.
Yeah, it is a first.
It's first edition.
Yeah. And Gwanda Harley's in there, too, but mostly the Eden Chopper Class, so.
Do we know how many, I mean, it did mention, and there's like six, I think he said four or five schools that do a chopper class.
Twelve.
Is there any close to us that does it?
Anybody in the audience know? Are there any schools close to us? Do you know? I don't know, I'll ask, though.
I mean, it seems like it was great participation, and I know we've done very well in the competitions.
We should host it, is what you're saying, like a regional contest.
A regional competition or something like that, you know?
It's a great idea. I'll bring it up to them.
Make it a fundraiser, so get the Thomas trucks or the.
There's like 12 schools that do it.
And Patty, I can answer your question here. Thank you for being so patient with me.
Sure.
At the last board meeting, you asked that question, and we had talked about that most likely it would be reinstated, but that I needed to get together with the elementary and G L P principals to take a look at the scheduling for next year. That scheduling has not happened yet, but most likely what we will do with that position this year, it's 45 minutes a week, is we'll embed it into date of time, which is what Mrs. Schnoffers does now. What we need to do this summer, though, is we need to take a look at what's happening in the next few years, because while this is a third-grade position that's being cut back on due to enrollment, next year it'll follow through a fourth grade, and the year after that with fifth grade. And there comes a point where it's difficult for us to hire at the G L P level. I mean, clearly, we've seen that with our music, because we have part-time teachers in music, too. So this is something that the district needs to take a bigger look at down the road for art and computer and library and all of that. This one would entail some interesting scheduling, so most likely it'll be reinstated, but I have not gotten together with them yet to do that.
Have you ever, I know you try to sit in with all the teachers, blah, blah, blah. Do you know exactly what she does for the school district? All of her duties and the amount of work that she does?
I know she does a lot of work, but I can't say that I understand everything she does, no.
You may want to have a conversation, just sit down with her.
You know.
And just to hear everything. I guess maybe, it's 45 minutes, the lady could give lessons to every single teacher about how to run a program or something during their lunch. I know several teachers would take that and do that.
Well, that's what this 45 minutes this year will be put into, is date of time. One of the things that we do have, so it's a really good segue, thank you, is our technology audit is going on right now. This is a pilot coser through B O C's, which we're extremely excited that they're doing with us. And so Andy Spence from Global Quest is interviewing people throughout the district as to what they do, especially within the technology department, what skill sets they have, what equipment we have, what software we have, how people think about it. They interviewed our seventh through ninth and our 10th through 12th grade superintendent advisory council, and then Mr. Graff is setting it up so he can interview the fifth and sixth graders, too.
When will you get that report?
We're hoping to have that presentation to you in June, at the June meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, very excited. He said his best time was with the kids, so. Thank you for bringing it up. That's all I have.
Did you talk about the flood status?
We let David talk about it, yeah.
And the board report update from Athletics, Physical Education, and Site Utilization Committee.
This is one of the three working committees for the capital project, and I'm sitting on the committee, so I'm going to report. We've had two meetings. We had the second meeting last week. First, although the title of the committee is Athletics, Physical Education, and Site Utilization, it's a little broader than that. It also deals with technology and phone systems, security issues, power generation and energy efficiency, some masonry issues, mechanical systems such as drainage and plumbing. And what we did at the last meeting last week was that our architects had prepared kind of a wish list of possible improvements in all these areas and presented those to the committee, and we discussed them. Some of the more in-depth conversations had to do with bus pickup and drop-off at the elementary school. Specifically, a couple different alternatives were presented to change and improve the traffic patterns there. That's been a kind of a sore spot over the last few years. So that was discussed, and a couple different ideas presented. There was a lot of time spent on possibly better using, in fact, most of the proposals had to do with this building here. And in terms of the gym space, there was a lot of discussion about better using the upstairs space that's currently used for wrestling and weight room, and possibly changing that so that it could actually be used for physical education classes. Discussion about the pool and pool improvements, a lot of discussion about potential athletic field renovations, like possibly turf, possibly a building near the turf that would encompass concessions, locker rooms, perhaps even classroom. And storage. The goal here is, in all the projects we're talking about, is to get the maximum building aid ratio. So if you incorporate the classroom in an adjacent building like that, you'd have an opportunity to get the maximum state aid ratio. So once these ideas were presented to us, we were, all the members of the committee were asked to score the whole list in terms of how we felt they were priorities from one to three, and then turn in our sheets so they could be tabulated. Those are due today, they're going to be reviewed by the architects, and they're going to report back to us at the next meeting, which is Wednesday, April 29. And after that meeting, I believe we're going to be reporting to the board in May. Am I right on that?
Yes, May 20.
Okay. And that's where we stand with that committee.
Thank you. So what will happen in between now and the May 20 meeting that Colin is referring to is on May 5, which is also the same night as the budget hearing, the Facility Advisory Committee will get together prior to that budget hearing. There are three board members that sit on that. Paul Shepard, Mike Burns, and Colin all sit. In addition to that, will be the architect, Sean, whom you met today, Mike McCarthy, whom you've seen, he's our project director that has also facilitated some of the presentations. Tom Caruso from campus, possibly Madeline, who is here, oh, she's still here, there's